Welcome to Hightown. Right, honorable doctor Saviour, who put your name on the list. This was too far. He was good. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm glad we're here. We're here for you to have a formal celebration of our pastor. Doctor Ushis, and this one, Ushah. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm glad we've had you. We have you. I want to know if you find it colorful or fancy of going to this side of the town. The state's chairman, Senator Faisa. He is retired and no player. The same way as you guys in general, we've been invited to Hightown. Let's have a look at this meeting. It is the former speaker, the president of the party, Colonel Commissioner Nkadi. And the other thing, right, the former chief, Nusa, don't leave. I'm quiet. You guys are happy. I'm quiet. Please, you're invited to Hightown. Again, input that tone, and so, don't talk into the other ear. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm glad we've had you on my horse. The former and former president of Redman United, President Sisabi Anisab. The former minister, the former president, he has the ability to go to other cities. Ladies and gentlemen, nothing we have to write on your own teeth, but I start all over again. In that, and that, God. Everyone will know the name. And we love you. The former chairman of the party, the man that started it all. The man that founded the party. The former chairman of the party. Former leader, pastor, dictator, priestess, and he has the last hope in the land. The greatest leader. Ladies and gentlemen, we invite you to have the former deputy speaker, former acting governor of Prashima State. Former chief, captain, and then back and ready, first of all, to Hightown. A former acting governor, you can't go away. Ladies and gentlemen, I think, as the next. All right, at this point in time, we are going to pick the group name away. A lot of especially one of the members of the party, the governor of the town, Harold Maitre. At this point in time, we'll start with an opening prayer. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point in time, we're going to start the program. We want to honor our father, our mentor, our brother-in-law, to honor that we're in every place, all by this location. And so, we're going to invite Tony Mark to stand, Reverend Doctor Odo, to give us an opening bell. Thank you very much, sir.
This time we must stand to honor this. And we're from. To love him, he is glorious, praise him, he has come. So long, we will run and live in his son. Who is here, there is night and hour, so they must see. They open their life in God only holy. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, let that hear his voice. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, let that people return. Oh, come, to their father, true Jesus, their strong. And giving their glory, praise him, he has come.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the fair weather. We thank you for the beautiful atmosphere. We thank you for your son, distinguished senator, Speaker Wayne Ojulua. We thank you for a great woman in South South, Cross River State. Thank you for what you're doing through him. Thank you for what you're doing through him in our state, in our nation, Nigeria. Blessed be your name in the name of Jesus. Father, we are here for the task of meeting, and we ask may you take control. Charge, take the lead, pray side over the meeting, speak through him, touch every line. Use him to transform the South South and the therapy stream across past day, even the old Prashima State and Nigeria as a whole, all the prayer acts in Jesus' mighty name. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we have brought out one. That was also very good, I appreciate it, you know. Ladies and gentlemen, we allow this, the ones who are struggling to do this on today. We are going to have an opening repast by the beauty of the Starland Movement. Lord, I love you, I love you. Eprese. Eprese. The father of the party. Father of the party. Let me, on behalf of the group, of men and women of the Black City Party, come all of you. Thank God Almighty for the question. One year. Let us appreciate. The leaders for the entire Barkasi government, yes, indeed. I'd like to sincerely recognize our chapter chairman, who happens to be the father of our great party, the Barkasi. I'd like to also recognize the president's commissioner. The only state executive council member. Who. And special grace of God Almighty, former vice chairman of this movement. I'd like to appreciate former commissioners. Former council chairman. Former absolute assembly members, deputy speakers. I'd like to also recognize our state security advisor, South. Who is here, seated with us. I'd like to appreciate our representative at the party level. We have brought them to our conference. I'm aware that the leadership of the party, the five, four human parts of the, the ten votes of Barkasi government. They are all here, seated. We commend our watching men. We commend all the party leaders from Barkasi government. We want to specially appreciate our pitiful women, the Barkasi women, our youth. And all the elders and traditional rulers that are here. Though I have not seen people with their cockpox and the shirt on. But I'm sure some are here, thought that. Well dressed. Let me first and foremost. Say very big thank you for all your support. We remember how we gave the enemy some peace. We had gone around in those and prayers of Barkasi government area. And I remembered we invited this particular city center. And I know our Barkasi men and women turn out in their lots large numbers. Come and welcome us, welcome the party. And you gave us your words. And you support in this. And that special grace of God Almighty. You came out, you supported our party. And we are good. Today, we have a big, a big, youngest senator in the Federal Republic of Nigeria. We want to thank you for that support. We want to appreciate you for all the prayers. We know that God is always with us. Our poor, dead brother interests. And your prayers has been working through us for us. Today, we have given to the youngest senator in Nigeria. We have given to the senator that is very busy. A very hardworking, very dynamic. And risky senator. A senator that speaks, or sounds like a Nigerian speaker. He speaks beyond the short of this country. He has global platform. He speak about the interest of Nigeria, the interest of Prashima State, the interest of the Southern Central District. By the best of God, he is the force of the youth of this nation. You did not make any mistake. We would like to say that the pastor, and senator, has support in prayer. It is this same APC. Same platform. And he uses it celebrating and giving us. Going showing that as he's going out there, he's going to give you an offensive representation. He's going to ensure that all of your duty is brought to you directly. And that special grace of God Almighty. Today, in Southern Central District, a super player has been celebrated by thirty of us. Attracting different forms of developmental rights to our Central District. To our local government and to our communities. Today, we got motion of sunlight, solar light. Across the length and breadth of Southern Central District. Today, Senator, super player has been able to create new roads. In the streets of Calabar. Today, he has brought grant. Assist our marketing design, our young executives. Today, a super player has been able to facilitate scholarship programs and team use. While various higher institutions are ready. Today, he has been able to attract and facilitate overseas scholarship. For our sons and daughters who have gone out there, to do their push garden studies. Today, we are having a different face of representation in Prashima State's South Central District. Concierge, you are good. Concierge of the man that he sent to the red chapas. He are also committed himself to the fact that. As he's going, he will come back to meet with you. He will come back to render his account of stewardship. And I want to use this opportunity, the fact that. To appreciate him, he does bring the party here. He has taught us to share. In fulfillment of that promise, Senator Superintendent of his first seat there. We direct to him to render his account of stewardship. To visit you. So that going forward, in the subsequent years of this representation, he can. Look at those areas of your needs. He can also go back to those needs. Or ensure that he can attract those needs back to the very core of Barkasi government of Nigeria. So we are here for that interactive session. We are here to say thank you for your support. We are here to say thank you for the prayers. We are here to say, as a family. All that Senator Superintendent of his doing is to further complement the effort of the state government. Senator Professino too, his green world. Is giving a different face of progress in Prashima State. If you go to Calabar, if you go to other part of the state, you are beginning to have a new face. And it is courtesy of the hardworking governor, Senator Professino, eh, eh, too. So what a super player he is doing. Is to support and compliment his effort. Because we have those at the national assembly. They are just to extract what we need. In Prashima State to complement the effort of the state government. We have given those on our continent and the federal level. It is expected that wherever they are, they need to work towards complementing the effort of the government. So for us, what they are super player is doing. Is supporting and complimenting the effort of the state government. So we are here to say thank you, God bless you. Wait for what we are going to continue to work together. And Prashima State, Southern Central District is our main business. Is our main focus. We must work together to transform Southern Central District. Especially Barkasi. Barkasi today is a big man. Barkasi is where we are today. Barkasi, Senator, last president, Senator, a super player is here to interface with you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for giving us a listening here. And the good Lord bless and continue to keep you. Happy New Month. Ladies and gentlemen, we can Google it and blast. That was the opening remark, the beauty of the Starland Movement, Honorable Father, eh, eh, Father. But don't ignore this, ladies and gentlemen, before our district director, eh, gives us, eh, eh, his report card. When he was, when the duty was on. The member representing Prashima State House Assembly, Barkasi State constituency, walked in. Honorable, eh, your back seat, please come to the Hightown, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, if you do, if only you see the, the teacher, what other ways? Please get a few of them, eh, eh, both of them. Please try to for recognition. Please get them, eh, eh, sir. And if you're not, please come to the Hightown, sir. Please, sir, come to the Hightown. And if you're not, we want to ask, with humility, our Stag and Berra to give us his daughter.
LPC. L P C. L P C.
Happy New Month. I was talking to the, my brother, the chapter chairman. And he was telling me how he struggled to, you know, make funds to bring here, but I know. The truth is, you don't draw the funds. It's part of the person. And I told you that. This is part of the reason why we said, let's not do this, sir. And why we said, let's not do that, eh, 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 eh. Because if we don't come back here like this, the next year, we will come back, see this place still like this. And twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven campaign. Know me so.
Absolutely.
So that's part of the reason, we said, let us come to this, sir. During the campaign, when I came here. We spoke, the campaign, it told you that what your votes, it figured the truth. And we said, please, that if you send us. That we know that in the next year, we will come back here and brief you on what we have been doing. Today, this town hall is a complement of that promise. That will always be accountable. We will always be now accountable to the people that voted and elected us. So this is our first town hall of our generation, God, the womb in the house. We inaugurated it to the Senate on the 30th of June, twenty twenty three. I think our generation, God, we need to be around. We're working hard, we're working diligently since we were connected. The work of a representative for the Senate is three poles. The first is lawmaking. The second is representation. And the third is oversight. The idea of the day job of oversight has to do with the membership of the committees, oversighting government agencies. So it's not very prevalent in terms of what we are here to talk about. But the two of lawmaking and representation are very relevant to you and the election. In the area of lawmaking, we have pushed six bills in the National Assembly. The bill brings from the National Women's Waterways Act to the South South Development Commission, et cetera, et cetera. All those deals are very relevant to our people and their deals, they are very signed into law, are capable of affecting our lives and the lives of Barkasi people positively. In the area of motions, we have pushed five motions on the floor of the Senate. The motion brings from the urgent need to rehabilitate the road. Which our brothers suffered in Akata, on the city of the Roman, eh, Tan Road. Eh, another motion was on the urgent intervention of the civil domain in the boundary clash between our brothers in Opa and our own brothers in Apia. But one of the emotions that pushed, and we pushed emotional to us was the urgent and compulsory treatment of gussets victims at hospitals. You see, that motion came around because there was a, there was a young lady, who had been living on her daughters, who had been alive, who had been a sister. She was attacked in the vehicle. She was fatally murdered and pushed out of the vehicle by these nonchalant robbers. The nurse and driver carried her to the hospital. When she got there, the hospital was demanding for a police support before they killed her. That young lady died, she was so bad, and the hospital had died. When I heard about that, we pushed the motion, we buried the motion on the floor of the Senate. And we had serious prayers in the motion. So we put the motion at the unanimous adoption of the motion. With someone, Inspector General of Police, the Ministry of Health, the General Hospital, whether it was a car. And as a direct outcome of that motion, the Inspector General of Police issued signals and directives to all permission, all police permission of this country. That there should be no demand for police support before they give you back the motion. Those are positive things, because they may not be used today. But the work of the lawmaker is national. We must create laws, enforce laws, that will one day positively affect our own brothers and sisters. And that will be the deal. In the area of representation. I like to spread my representation under four pillars. The first is healthcare. Because without health, there can be no life. If you don't have good health, you can't go to the workplace, you can't go to the bar, you can't go to school. So the most, the primary need of any human being first is good health, sound, mighty, sound playing. We regards to that, we organized two medical outages. In the cross river south, as we said, two. This outage took care of our brothers and sisters, three soldiers, three ice soldiers, left out troops, et cetera. Now, the first one dealt in Calabar, Rizibar. The second one dealt in Akafa. The third one, we are going to bring it to this further constituency of Barkasi. Beyond that, because you know that medical outages are seasonal events. But sickness is not, is not a road. It will not come when you break the medical outages. So what we must do is to walk close to the district government and see the work being we have been doing for that to equip. And we have visited some of our primary health centers here in Barkasi. That's something we are going to take aggressively over the next year. The next area, so the next pillar is education. Education is the number one thing that needs for any young man or woman. And so, for me as a resident, I do not believe in education. You know, the situation in the country today. Schools fees have increased, cost of living have increased, or wages have not increased the same way. What we have done, we did a program last year, was called Educational Support Program. Where government and women from several local governments, we put out the website, we went from lying to register. And we did a program where we provided some support for their school fees towards the educational rights, preventing all the accounts. Sons and daughters of Barkasi, a part of the educational rights. We are going to redo that program again this year. As I've been moving around to various local governments, I found out that the certification did not have been that high. So this time, and what we are hoping to do also, to inform the local government, charter of the party, to also inform them, to inform the local administration that they can get this information readily and freely. To those who may need it, so that we can assist the school fees of our young men and women in the tertiary institutions, yeah, eh, eh. Beyond that, in education, so for the loss of our scholarship. For our young sons and daughters that are from the Southern Central District. Eh, we facilitated under the area of P T D F and also M G D C. So most of these things, like I say, it's almost to be taught. Like, because there are younger that we, they see areas of medical help, they're giving some of this foreign scholarship. It's a program that they go online, apply, go for the test. No matter what it is, just try. No matter what it is, just try. When you, when you speak the rest to us, we will go and look and love you and see how you can make sure that our people are also hiring around. That is what I mean by that. The last one on the list of the pillars, the fourth pillar is infrastructure. Another infrastructure, at this stage level here. Our government, His Excellency Senator Basie El-Ebouche, is doing a fantastic job in the area of infrastructure review. Like the local infrastructure, then we are replacing all the infrastructure, but the work is lost, and so we need further government intervention. Us there, Abuja myself, the House of Representatives, representatives, federal constituency, we are also working to ensure that we can assist and implement the state law against the state infrastructure, grand master plan. So what we have done is, various local governments will be able to intervene in terms of internal construction. We also intervene in the area of, the lighting of the area, because he greets nights, chase the weight of that person. Here in Akasi, what we put a leadership by the local government, we believe to pick points of areas where they have started or they have allocated for this solar lights. I know that the days to the dawn, but I think they may have asked of you in terms of installation. But we just to know that as we speak now, I believe the contractor is on site currently doing installation today, as we speak. And that's the first of the reasons, we will say to intervene in the area of light in Akasi. So that as much as possible, we can ensure that there's more security in Akasi, and there is more productivity where our people can stay out of it and still do their business or trading. For today, it's not just for listening to me, they will gain from this opportunity where we are coming today. They should come, so that we listen to you. We sent us to our project within the period of 65 days. In fact, two weeks ago was our first year of membership. We are to come that exact weekend for we have international invitations, for better or for worse. We are here, we will be one year, two weeks, since we did our road journey to Akasi. We are here to listen to you, so that we know the needs of the local government, so that as we go back and start work again for the second year, we will be able to. We will be those people, we will be able to work hand in hand with the leader of the party there in the state, His Excellency Senator Basie El-Ebouche, so that we can fix those issues in the local government. We will also be working hand in hand, because we are a federal government, with the President of this country, President Bola against the goal. Yes, he believes us, in the economic policies that had to be changed at the beginning of this administration. Those things are meant to achieve, or we must push that achieving. But I want to assure you that, as I said, there is night ahead of the tunnel, because tomorrow is going to be better, based on those policies that have been implemented. So we are here to listen to our people, so at this point, I want to yield the right of hope, so that we can listen, we can treat, and we know what we need to do, for what we have to do. Thank you very much. I'll pay my share of the fat that I've had a lot. Thank you very much. Please, there is a lot going round, a lot is to wait, please do well to question as your name is on there, and at least your work and your love are pleased. It's all good, I'm sure you register your name on it. At this point in time, the main reason why we are here today is to hear from you, each one. So we are going to get a representative for each one. Um, I want us to read everyone who did earlier, we, I want to play with you, that clap wasn't from you now. After the speech of the very eminent Stadler Bera, a member of the Senate, Senator Azubel, I don't know if you have heard of him. The clap, the clap wasn't enough. Please, can we do a better clap? Please, you didn't hear what you want. Very soon, ladies and gentlemen, at this point in time, we want all people of Akasi to speak their minds, their papers, their figures, speak to the Senate. Tell him how we beg and ask him, I'm going to appoint a person, I'm going to speak, I've been told that about five persons and I would speak for once of time. So whatever you have to say, you fly behind your representative. Number one speaker, a commissioner. Number two, our real authority. Number three, the House of Assembly. Number four, our leader, President Wadon. Number five, for the clap. So, now you're going to be clapping. Let us say it. Please, we can't get to this point. And we are not here to find persons and speak for the people. We use speak in this manner, two for the Libera, two for the Oka. All who have to speak. Which allow us to speak on behalf of those who have a hand. Then, we repeat one for our elder, to speak from the height. So please, let us listen to you. The people, the people, the people. How are they doing, everybody?
Yeah, good morning to everybody, yes, indeed. My group of love, Basie, members of the High Table. I, the senior senator, am a very active member in the Red Chamber, I come from this. I, it was important issue of fronting and casting people. Would you respect all intent and purposes, is a issue of the settlements. Since we have seen it, and we are a part of Nigeria, about eighteen years ago, we are yet to be formally reset. It is a precarious matter. We were brought here, and our brothers from the camp here have been dislocated, am I right? The Vakasi people will learn everything that God almighty gave to us. Our homes, our ancestors have asked, our historical, our artifacts, our shines, our vagabond, our joyous compensation has not been paid. Various resettlement programs handled by the Libera government, the government's subsequent personnel government never are having to walk now. That is the question of Akasi. So sad, not to say we do wrong, at your personal discretion, you can invite some of us. I'm speaking on behalf of Vakasi Libera, but there's nothing wrong for me to discuss to stay the member of the camp brothers, am I right? They have been dislocated. That's where I am. So sad, as they went out. A, um, a committee was set up in 2000 days. And in the sense of us, and in the sense of Vakasi general assembly, the deputy speakers said, some of us were international assembly. That committee was handled by, that committee was formed by the City Committee on Judicial, City Committee on Local Government, City Committee on States. Till this day, and again, that committee was set up in 2000 days. That committee has not seen the report up to this day. So much billions of naira has been raised for the resettlement of Vakasi, up till now, we don't see anything. Again, to guide you, Basie, the greatest thing we can do to us is the actual problem of resettlement of Vakasi. Two, there is a motion for a bill to establish Vakasi Development Commission. Four, this college and other things. Proper resettlement of Vakasi is a very major issue. We are proud to meet those, sir. A people to be enacted for the establishment of Vakasi Development Commission. And those commission, we will guide you, we will send documents to you to guide you. Thank you so much, my name is Benza, you don't know the MC, if you want to recognize me. And honorable, a young people, and the father, I met him about to the House of Assembly for Vakasi, 1997. I've been prepared in the middle of setting up Vakasi, I've been the former director of Vakasi. Thank you, thank you, sorry.
And we know that Vakasi was the very first, and the very first of the people. I was excited, I'm not mad, I'm not mad, I'm not mad, so I think it's happening with the women. So when the women are there. These are the women, isn't it? LPC!
Standing on the world's top platform, my name is Gustav, the old, the old, the old. The person who is at the scene, in the party, 2013. I'm still alive, strong and adequate. There are many, many of our citizens, standing there. And what for you, standing there. So we are here, the main problem I see in Vakasi is how to harmonize, only and also for emotions. Because, the issue of some boogeyman attack, okay, some boogeyman, Vakasi, oh for. Those, the mood of our roots, but we have photos, now we have one man, yes, it does. So I want to do, and want to harmonize and use it. Because there was, there's not visited. That's why we are talking. So when you love person, you say you love the boogeyman. Obviously, beating and hatred, which of our partner, because of them, and because of that, a, 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 a true process of the other. So my leader, his music and harmonize, that was so, every Bakasi would put all of all. So I, I want to remember, I tell you, we did not do for here. Now we, we was a very, very successful. A promise to respect the other, our life, so. So my goodness, 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 I will talk. Okay, okay. Let's have this, have this support in first round, come on, go. After that, APC! Please tell me what has been your profession, your career path, your history, your book. My people, the right history, you're doing a lot of time, so I believe you will become. Doctor, Mrs, and Napoleon, please come on.
APC! APC women! This is Mr. Senator of Bakasi on the high table. Let this man on the already established protocol. My name is Doctor Bakasi Nakana, I'm a medical doctor. And from Abana World in Bakasi in Brazil. First, I want to thank you, this Mr. Senator, you've given us a face in the National Assembly. We are super, super, super. All of the national positions, I want to urge you to keep on. You are going to, you've already taken across the South Senatorial District to a very high level, God bless you. So I give listen to what has been said already. I just want to read or put clarity towards your head, particularly from the last speaker. Yes, I don't want to grab into relocation, resentment, because for me, I feel it's not inside your genes. But I want to add more on legislation, because that is primarily your responsibility. And that is because in the last election, you can remember that Bakasi were got a very small vote. Very small, and when you come like, look at the number of people, this is not all. When you came for campaign, you saw so many people. You should ask yourself, so why was the vote so small? It is because of this dichotomy of voting over. And I want you to know that, except to handle that, even the next primary election, I give you what I want to talk. And that I deny what they like. So that is something, I saw the list of votes that you appointed. I'm sorry, I don't know why you identify me from Bakasi. And in politics, you consider those that have the strength first. And we want to have the strength, this is the thing for us. Unique to the, the, when, before you were starting, you started some activities, I watched your social media. And you were talking about Bakasi, and I was like, wow, this is the person we need. I don't know what happened here. This is what we need. Don't give up on this. Don't give up on it, because that's just what we need. We need to reconcile O three, O four. We need to reconcile with you, to have a positive influence. Without that, or what you are saying in Bakasi, I don't know what you will see next. Someone, sir, I want to also tell you that the women, I know you did my little courage, I was in your little courage, I was in the theater. And I, I was in the theater, I was in the theater, I was in the theater, we came at, we like, we came at last. Sir, remember the women, in everything you are doing. Remember Bakasi, we have anything, we have doctors, we have lawyers, we have all professionals in Bakasi. Please, remember Bakasi to you. Not only the women, but our family because I'm a woman. Remember the women, we all work for you. During your election, when I see, we were top, we had to go back the same day. Yes, so please, sir, don't forget us. The one thing I want to say last week, keep up the good work, we are super, super, super proud of you.
The Mr. Senator Nakana, I'm sure he, I'm sure he has seen that on the floor. He knew, he was very much, he was very mad. The community, the potential, the officer of the government, and part, part of humanity.
Many of these people, Mr. Senator, thank you so much for your honesty, for what you did. I look at my, every members of the item group, Bakasi. With the way we transpired to our people, we believe that all of the people, the most relevant, this happens in Senatorial District, that will be remembered today. And that's why I'm well, I'm well, I'm well, I'm well, I'm proud of you. When I come in, I get a promotion, as I said, that's my senator. When I talk, I'm proud of you. If you didn't perform well, I'm, I'm sure, if you performed well, that's my senator. You are the senator, you are the president of the, the Allah should give the young people opportunity to move. If I think you perform well, I'm happy.
And the nurses, welcome to the nurses. They still have spoken on their handouts, that they used the given opportunity because they were cool, not like a bad person.
He has said he started at the red carpet chairman. So I will start first and foremost to comment you, sir. While having on the already established protocol, I want to comment your effort. The day one year in office, you have let us start a lot of mild strokes, which your predecessors could not. I wonder what will happen at the end of the afternoon. You have shot a lot of Italians, a lot of power. You have earned all what it takes to be the senator of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. A lot has been said about the problems of the national government in there. So I don't want to reiterate. Rather, I want to project those points from the standpoint of the executive council headed by our distinguished distinguished senator Prince Otu. All the problems you have brought to the fore this afternoon. There have been problems that our distinguished senator Prince Otu has been presenting and showing great concern in the executive council level. So I want to rather employ our senator distinguished senator to continue to synergize with his excellency and complement his efforts the same way he has started. Because with the synergy, all our problems will be solved. If not brought to a logical conclusion, at least a number of those problems will be solved. I want to thank the senator for the provision of the for the provision of the straight lines that I want to observe distinguished senator, that many of our communities, many of the wars have not benefited. Many, so I want please for you to thank the the people on ground to please take off the socks of other communities. It's like some communities are being sidelined, like the Indian community and others. Please let them take care of all the localities within the Bacassie Local Government area. It is one thing to float projects, but on the other side, for you to enhance effective supervision of those projects. Otherwise, your efforts will be brought to futility. So please enhance strong supervision of all the projects you are instituted, not only in Bacassie, but in the whole of Southern Senatorial District. I know the passion the senator has about the revisiting of the city of Bacassie, Local Government area to also back up Bacassie to give a role based on the agreements. And I want to assure you that with the cooperation of our senator and the red chair master, if you synergize properly with the governor, that issue will receive positive blessings. Concerning appointments, I wanted to emphasize that though so many people have deliberated on it. It is a tradition that Bacassie people, especially women, have not been fortunate yet. But the governor has made a promise to start or commence the release of series of appointments. So all we do is to be patient. But I also appeal to our leaders, myself inclusive, to ensure that more people from Bacassie, more aides from Bacassie have been sponsored for the different set of our appointments. Most especially, I should not because I'm a woman. But I know we have totally intelligent, learned, articulate women from Bacassie. They should also be given a bright position in this administration. Finally, I want to assure you that the APC government headed by Prince Vasyi Otu, in a song with this inattentive senator of ours, they are very, very positive of revamping and revitalizing everything that concerns across the state, especially in the Southern Senatorial District. On that note, I want to encourage all those who are very devoted and concerned about APC to continue to remain loyal. Don't be attracted or distracted. You can be attracted through a large from other parties. And you can be distracted by them poisoning your minds against the APC government. I want to assure you that APC government, under the leadership of distinguished senator Prince Vasyi Otu that has just started, will bring APC and its government to the end of the rattle that we all want to have. So once again, I implore you, prevent APC to the fore. APC, APC, Bacassie, together with God. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think you're going to have no one else here. Therefore, the main priority of Bacassie is to save the people who come here. Let me give you three points that she has made that were entitled. One is that the long awaited list of appointments will turn out in no distant time. Did I hear you just clap your hands today? And then the second one is in time, always in time. They would have already said that they are going to be a greater beneficiary of whoever is calling out. And then they tell you what they should do, they need money. That's what I have to say. All right, Mr. Tore, I want to call on the man who is representing Bacassie in the state of Bacassie. Honorable, King of Bacassie, important chairman, let's put our hands together for him. Important chairman, please.
Yebab Bacassie. Yebab Bacassie. I'm running in my head this person, representing the Southern Senatorial District of Bacassie. Then I recommend on all leaders here, like the Sanofi, where they stand the good. After all, I represent the oppressed and the marginalized of Bacassie. And for that reason, I think there is a lot of work in Bacassie. And through all these issues that are in the nation, although it will be very difficult. Because of that, we have to sit down. Bacassie have not had the eyes, they have just had the eyes, they have passed the years. And through the pressure of making a deal with the Senatorial Governor, to have brought mine to Bacassie. For one of the basic projects that will come to the decision of that, it is the life, the ownership of that office. And the problem of that, that only one professional person in front of Bacassie alone. Absolutely, that did the commission of that matter. This matter is probably one of the best things that will need most of our, I expect, of Bacassie. So we can, uh, to embrace that, uh, this is the best. Uh, the senior senator, we can add here, I mean, any person, please, to help with this of Bacassie, any person of Bacassie. Bacassie is international rehabilitation, that's what we're seeing, that's what we're talking about. You go to the council, they to open up the channel of Bacassie. When you do that, the Bacassie people will be very happy. You have done well, you are a good man, you have achieved that important. You have done everything that you want. But please, other issues, voter, dichotomy, non over seven, proper settlement, competition issues affecting, if not if you want to prove. But you don't think the vote, those ones that are opening to be sought here. Please, you don't find time to talk to me, I'm still here in the research. Yebab Bacassie. Bacassie, you better be careful. You better be careful. When this comes, it is the total relief, uh, relief, relief. Bacassie, please. All right, the Lord has told you, the Lord has told you, we have passed chairman of Bacassie. Father Ochi, you hear that, all body, you hear that, the right is mine.
Yes, is this your senator? My pastor speaks right there. Yebab Bacassie. Is this your doctor? I want to thank you for what, trying to utilize the extended space in the, of the Southern Senatorial District. This is the first time I am sitting in the town hall meeting where a senator is bringing his workplace one year after office. Am I lying here? We are never having this. You see this, as I have done, this is the first time since nineteen ninety-nine that we have seated in the hall and have served senator, he is addressing us on the report card to the one year ago. So I want to say hello to you and say that, uh, we pray, wanting to pray for you to move the service identity to make that right. My point is, I've seen for some, I've seen that we have hands in presidential amnesty program. Sometimes I have a very, an institution with it, an amnesty for the use of Bacassie. I want to say that those things were abandoned, lingered, those things have caused very much attention to this day. I want to repeat to you this. They do matter very seriously, when those who surrender hands in Bacassie, they are created. They then be activated to receive a peace, or else we will do no peace in this local government. That's another one. Number two, we have seen the last NSA's program, even the former dictator, he became a victim of NSA's program. We are most critical infrastructure in Bacassie because of NSA's. And we are aware that the central government, other board, have included some resources to rehabilitate this facility, from the NSA's, the prime minister, the commission, nothing was left, the local government, everything was broken up. So we want to be doing this, we have to offices, and ensure that this critical infrastructure in a local government. Like the first ever, this is the only one we have, that is going down by the day. I don't know why the NSA's brain is still living in this relationship, I don't know. I will leave that for later. Yebab Bacassie. Last year, my distinguished senator, as the mayor past chairman of this council, I discovered that in our payroll, the local government system did not employ up to five percent individuals. But Bacassie is the payroll of which the design of government system will produce Bacassie. This thing is stored nationally. And they are telling to be shared for several hundred and going to found local government in Nigeria. They were trying to do, do, while, while, you know, you have one story, there are not in payroll. So the essence is beyond, the essence is beyond, the essence is beyond, the complete, our people, the people, the people, the people, the people. Our payroll, just the use of government, our money, our money, I said, of our, of the last week, so, and for how long? Last week, because Bacassie issue, people are great, issue of one of my servants, sleep agreement and all that. I want to say this, when the God of Bacassie people have places of goods now, they will check our goods if they want to share the stuff to us. The person who asked is, was it not Bacassie that put those back in on thirty percent regeneration map? For all the game, thirty percent they will enjoy. When Bacassie was lost, fact of the fact, we have a very good, because of that, the government, for the money, they say, was it not money? You don't deserve anything good. I want to say, now, of whom you are here, the bottom man here, the top people man here, we have to, let's be clear. Governments are posted and better, come to our aid. The people of Bacassie, by your government law, they require to do what's in the camp. What did they say? Nothing. They only went to root on, made a, a party from only common people's cheese and against ended there. They want to acquire that of Bacassie on this land. The system will tell you that government has acquired the whole of the camp and land, and no corporation have been paid for. So we are never getting on there. We are becoming tired of these persons and the people of the owners of the land, now so displaced. That's why you don't see, they hardly any time we meet and go and not fight. Because as soon as we are conversation, we will not fight today by the name of war. Yebab Bacassie, you see this, we, we count on you to look each other's face. Please try and take this long for the killer, you have, or when you have, you have been yourself. Yebab Bacassie. How long have I been watching you, man? We appreciate, we appreciate. Yebab Bacassie. Uh, Mr. Wish, standing on, first minute, I want to commend this, the, the wishes that has gone very time. Uh, a lot as they say, they beyond the town hall, they is need for the strategic engagement of the leaders of Bacassie. Bacassie is one local government that is handling Nigeria and Boro State and all of us on the level. Very important issue of the U N and the rest, appointment has been highlighted. But for the peaceful living condition of the people of Bacassie. We need to sit together and look at the Supreme Court judgment that has to do with the dichotomy of O three and O four. This has been said more than ten days ago. What's working, please, is working well. If we continue to keep this thing and you go into the vast content and one really, the one event that God will give you, then this will continue to be a recurring destiny. Legal should be rules, that when there are problems, those problems should be targeted and decisively dealt with. It should not be one matter, that from, don't abuse to only remove it to, I am here now, the place to do and all the same. And that's important on this, please, the Supreme Court have rested this matter. Perhaps I will, I will you of the company before the strategy or technical committee will engage with you on that to rest this matter before the election, so that even the voters trained of Bacassie that is being mocked at and being partly, should stop. And I just to highlight this, whenever you are counting the vote of Bacassie, please, also expose the three ones of the camp, the ones that are central, to act on that that comes with the spectrum that is called Bacassie. Because this is part of Bacassie. So you cannot count the votes when this campaign comes again, when it starts to count the votes, you are counting it for our, our president, our government. It's very difficult and I think very prejudiced that, before the next election. The other part of that would have to be on the constant engagement. I know you have started. The next one should come faster, before you hear the people, you know you understand they are challenging. Second, we are very proud of what you are doing. We are seeing you at international forum, we are seeing you at national forum. We want to see you more at the local forum. We want to see you, yes, we want to see you more, yes, you have been a thank you for that. So without much ado, I'm forwarding my voice to the pleasure of, uh, position that have been made, that Bacassie people are pleased, that you are here for us, and you know this message has been highlighted, you will take time to see this all and proper, far greater, vast solutions for them, that you have not received. Bacassie, I will, I will, for all the persons that have spoken this far. And indeed, we have also been well. And if you allow myself to continue to speak, we will be repeating what every other person must have spoken. And this one in time, we want to call on our very distinguished senator, the standard bearer, to start responding to this, uh, speeches. Bacassie again. Bacassie again. APC. I think we are be exhausted as such, everybody, and I'm happy. They have taken us and these three women's team, and people are speaking from all angles. And everyone has spoken in very gentle, very intelligently, starting from, from, uh, the Palayan chairman. And I will repeat over and over again. And I think what he said has touched on the need. There is a need for us to look at this issue of the success of the people of Bacassie. Eighteen years after the decision of the permission. I meant what he said, that we will be hearing in June two thousand and eight, in the joint committee of judiciary, state and local government committees. And I return to a future, I'll go to the archive, I'll look for that report. And we will, I'll look for that report, I'll look for the prayers and finally, if it was presented, the one presenter will find a way to show how it have been presented. Or whether the case will report back progress in this house. He came up with the idea for the appeal of the establishment of the Bacassie Development Commission. I think it is a fantastic idea, we will try our best to approach it, we will, we will get technical issues and needs for a unique piece of Bacassie. I would say in the, I don't know if you see sixty-five years history of Nigeria. I don't think since the armamission of Nigeria by Lord United in nineteen fourteen that there has been any loss of the territory of Nigeria. People are waiting like that. So if over in hundred and almost, uh, hundred and ten years, over a century long, you only have one case of cessation of our land, giving away of our southern territory. And I think there is a case for there to be a commission, for that to be something that, that will be done. So you know, you will approach it with a police, you know, everything in the United States is, uh, requires a parley with a police, because one person cannot present something and be closed. You need to be able to read the bill, you need to be able to condescend the police. And for that, we need some of the history and some information to the all of this on paper. You shall focus on the ground, and I think of the same issue that was highlighted by Dr. Nakana Bato. This is the harmonization of the police. The votes and the discrepancies, the reconciliation, as the need votes are in O three, and need votes are in O four. And now, we will look into this, like I said, I think ultimately, we will need for some sort of technical policy on these issues in Bacassie, so that they can form, it will reform well at the base of issues, and the best way to approach these issues at the federal level. Dr. Nakana spoke very well, she's a physician, and yes, she was a volunteer at American Company. I want to thank you for your turn to serve the people. You said you should remember the women in progress and the power. You try to remember the women from time to time. And I don't think you ever got to do that, when the women will not carry along. But, um, as you have been moving now from there, to that part, to the part, to Ramasa, I know the real now, the true wish you have, you will take over and over, and tie the women and block, and the women are not being carried along, we are leaving them. You say yes? You didn't declare, you are not going to, you are not going to. No? You decided that what we do now, that we can't explore violence, the next time, for the, I don't want to do, I don't want to do a speech to people. And we will do a group of women, and this women are still alive, they are still access that, they are still up there. And I will come back out, and we try to do that, we might, we might, we may, we may. Women, I give, I give, I give. Come in, come in, thank you. You still don't, communication with me, no? Your two thousand and one is, uh, our party chairman. But you also know the people that have worked with us, except for local government contributors, for this dimension, who work and they now meet, and listen, and say your own, so issues that are always easy for you to communicate. On the more grassroots level, I'm sure all of you know who is those that have support for us very closely with us. You don't know who is who, so. On a more grassroots level, I'm sure all of you know who is Joseph Asukonwu, he's very close to the women, you don't know who is Joseph? Are you kind of the woman? But that's something that was very close to me. Okay, see, he said this one is my friend, no problem, let him remember my friend, eh? In the past, we decided that let us give him, the way people grow, it does the same way of gasco, if he started like this, he has to grow. That man is a ranking chair lover and player of any season. So now, let me ask you, you say you want to turn off competition, I can't change for you, before I leave there, you know, to give me one young man, one young woman as my lesson, who will be a better, and please. Please, we are super school, ABC, ABC, we are super school, eh? And he spoke about the bank, he still has a position, when we look into that, and let me tell you, huh? That is a part of the Ministry of Nigeria Delta, Ministry of Nigeria Delta, is a separate, uh, according to separate institution entirely, but we look into it and see what we can do, we spoke about it, they are doing their best, we push, they're doing their best, like I just pointed out, one of them is now an employee, but they do, so we want you to do more in that area. You spoke a lot, you have your paper, calling that one man, he was a dwarf prince, he said free bus service and God's half monster, etcetera, etcetera. I have your paper, believe you spoke for all the young men and women of Bacassie, we will look into it and see God and what we can prepare. And then maybe you spoke about, uh, you visited the issue of the senate, it's called, you know, that chapter, eh? Eh, eh, are you like the job, you spoke about the issue of the senate, so, the religious people that are performing God's, is excellency Senator Marcelo, who is on top of that issue, as I stated, very much respected him, and his mind at the end of the show, he's making very difficult, very aggressively, and I believe that it's going to produce.
Maybe it's like a paper voice, so, the governor is voting very hard, and he takes it down, and they don't, I'm aware, I answered great to that. When it comes to the leadership, when it comes to leadership of new leadership, I run out, you see this game, nobody steps outside, eh? You have to step in, and if you want to ask properly, you know, let it, or I can tell you that, he can't come from outside and impose leadership, so if there are people are there, find a way to start working with them, and put their attention on the different, that's exactly what I get myself. But obviously, it takes the grace of God, so I wish you, there's anything you can do to support and do new leadership, we try our best. But I also critique with the leader of the local government, that nobody can be there forever, as you get both, the new people that will run for the letters and they all try to muster up and do new leadership. And the other commissioner, Dr. Lawrence Schreiter, she spoke about synergizing the government, I want to lecture to her, we are doing that, most people they don't see, they can't imagine, they are there to, to get free, to get directly of what we need. Right now, the government is on the walk trip outside the country, it's nine to four, you guys, it's not so late, it's now three in, but the media are fighting for it. It's brief about that we are coming here, that when, and when we finish from there, we can go back to him and say, this and that is what they have seen ahead. So the synergy is there, and by the grace of God, we have produced, you see, when we came to Bacassie, when we came to Bacassie in early forty fifty three, so ask for your votes, you presented yourself as a candidate, and that thing you said was five over, five over, and Bacassie did a five over, have a very good applause for yourself. The president, the president, that's the number one of the people, you voted in the government, that's the number one, you see, my number one in the state. You voted in the senate, you voted in Papa, your House of Red Jazz, you voted in the empowerment, the five of us are a team, and that's how it works, we synergize. Empowerment, if you have a legal, you left it, they will not be only, they will not be that, that is how it is, it works, it works as a synergy. Five over, thank you very much. And she spoke about the lights, that their lights are from, lights have come, and they're speaking, they are in the installation, but we can't so please, that is so. The first thing to do is what I'm.